...Appreciation Day. And I wanted to take a moment to publicly have us thank our current, our future, our former law enforcement officials, including our own Doug Dodd, who is one of those former SRO number three, is it badge number three? Okay. Our current SROs, we have a law enforcement academy here. They are building and developing our future law enforcement personnel, as well as the instructors there, our chief of police, Chief Vincent, and our school guardians, a lot of them are former law enforcement as well. These great men and women daily protect our students, our staff, and our schools. They are on the front lines of our security. They are training the next generation of our law enforcement personnel, and they are teaching our students how to be safe, whether in life, on the internet, or on the open road. They are walking the halls of our schools, and they are ensuring we are safe and we are protected. We are very grateful to them. Motorola did a great little video here, and it's not very long, so I'm just going to quickly play it for you all. And with that, we thank all of them. If we would all rise for the national.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I need a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Dodd and a second by Ms. Counts. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four to one. Four to zero. All right, citizen's comments. Ms. Smith, you're off. It's going to be this quick. What'd you say, hon?
I said I didn't know it was going to be this quick. I thought you'd do it at 5:15.
Oh, I don't know. You're here, it's here, we'll do it.
Wonderful, thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Vice Chair, Ms. Bryant, Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Moran, and of course, our board members. My name is Victoria Smith.
Can you guys see my work log?
You can take that off because you're taking away from me, buddy.
Oh. Okay, thank you. My name is Victoria Smith, Citrus County Education Association President, as well as teacher. Plus, it's my teacher's voice, so you know how it goes. All right, according to the district's COVID dashboard, 118 employees tested positive for COVID between August 20th and January 7th. This represents positive numbers and does not give the number of employees forced to quarantine due to COVID exposure. Up until December 13, 2020, employees who were required to quarantine or seek testing were entitled to 10 days of emergency leave under the Federal Families First Coronavirus Response Act. This meant that staff did not have to exhaust the precious few days of sick leave. Now that FFCRA has been allowed to expire, employees who are directed to quarantine and cannot work remotely must use their personal accrued leave time or take unpaid. When we returned from winter break, CCA reached out to the district staff to consider a voluntary extension of the 10 days of emergency COVID leave for employees. We are still not heard anything. We are aware of two dozen districts who have already showed their compassion to their employees by extending the 10 days of emergency leave provision from the FFCRA. Just today, I found out that Pasco County not only has extended the 10 days, but also added 20 days for anyone that was due to work-related. CCA also has tried to bargain twice for an employee to employ sick leave donation program, which would not cost the district any more money and would be an extension of the already sick leave bank. Once was last year and again this past October, because especially it's felt that it's needed because of the circumstances. Both times it was turned down. This next semester, we will have more students returning back to school, so that means the six feet apart will be more difficult, and COVID cases still not under control. We need the board members to show their compassion and support to their employees, as they have at the beginning of this pandemic, by extending the 10 days of emergency leave and explore how to provide an employee-to-employ sick leave donation program. That is all already being utilized in other counties as well. Thank you.
Okay, we're ready to approve the consent agenda? Move to the approved consent agenda?
Second.
There was a motion by Ms. Counts and a second by Mr. Kennedy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four to zero. And if we could have from Ms. Bryant our, what's it called?
So, donations.
Approved the $900 donation to Plural City Elementary School from Terawood Homeowners Association. They approved the $750 donation to Plural City Elementary School from David and Suprema Waller. Approved the $881.97 Eat Gift Card donation to Wecanter Primary School from Office Depot. Approved the $1,900 donation to Crystal River Middle School from Crystal Motor Car Company. Approved the $711 donation to Citrus High School from 7-Eleven. Approved the $500 donation to Citrus High School from West Coast Metal Fabricators. Approved the $1,500 donation to Whittaker T.C. from the Rotary Club of Urbanists Charitable Foundation. Approved the $500 donation to Citrus High School from J.M. Gibson Mechanical Incorporated. Approved the $600 donation to Citrus High School from the Law Office of Grant Nozer LLC. Approved the $1,000 donation to Citrus High School from Production at Contra Costa. And approved the $500 donation to Citrus High School from Rock Solid Creations. For a total donations of $9,742.97.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, we're ready for our school support services? No, we're ready for the presentation, Citrus County Education Foundation.
Good afternoon. I am here before you to give you the district-wide winner, which we do annually, of the district campaign results of our schools and all of the different departments throughout the district with the contributions that they make to the United Way of Citrus County, as well as the Education Foundation. That money that comes back into our schools in many, many ways. So, the total contributions this year to the United Way from Citrus County Schools was $7,080.18. The total contributions to the Education Foundation was $10,056.18. For a total amount of contributions combined from Citrus County School employees, $17,136.36, which is phenomenal. It's very, very good, very, very generous, especially in these times. So, every year, there is a department or a school who makes the largest contribution, and I am very pleased to say that the department that contributed the largest amount, and this is their second year running, is Educational Services. So, congratulations. And you have to come and get your trophy. Dr. Hebert, and it has already been marked, District. Oh, just a suggestion. And they, well, yes, I guess that's right. I don't have to be.
Yes, you do.
Congratulations. Enjoy.
That's great.
The trophy or myself?
All of you.
A whole bunch? I think that we won it, yeah.
Yes, you did. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Tom Bobb.
Thank you.
Now, we're ready to approve the instructional support recommendations. It's lame. Try to jump ahead a few early.
That's all right.
Good afternoon. I ask the board to approve the instructional and support recommendations as listed on the golden rod.
Everybody does notice Mr. Dixon's back face? Yes. Will that scratch one?
Yes.
I move approval of the golden rod for superintendent's recommendation for personnel and support, instructional and support. Ms. Counts, I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Ms. Counts for those motions. Mr. Kennedy with the second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero.
And the fire call, Mr. Dixon's, is just going into.
Just going into.
So, we're.
He's here all day.
We still got him. Just because I had to get my heart started. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we need Mr. Stokes for school support services. Facilities construction maintenance.
I think Miss Crowe, per calendar. It was in the bottom of the page.
Oh, hold on a minute.
Please, Miss Crowe.
Come on, Miss Crowe.
Yeah, it's just at the top there.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I see it now.
Do I need to escape out of this first?
Escape, yeah. And, um, you can take off the mask so we can hear you.
Oh, you got it.
Thanks.
All right, it's coming on. You also have this presentation, I believe, as well. I'm here to present the results from the calendar voting for the 21, 22 school year. I will say that this is a very different year of results than we've ever had before. This is the first time where our board has actually been a beat presented with some options, instead of a just clear winner. So, I'm going to take you through this here. Okay, there we go. All right, so we followed our process like we always have. I will tell you, there was one difference this year. Before we got to the step where we are today, presenting the calendar with the majority of votes to you, this year, we did electronic voting for all of our staff votes. So, everybody received a link. It was very quick, which was just two questions. One, which calendar do you choose? And then asking for some reasons why they chose that calendar. So, it was a very quick process, but it helped us eliminate the whole counting of paper votes, which was nice. I mean, I feel like this was definitely lent to probably more accuracy. But it did, though, I will tell you, lead to not as many voting, where we thought that there would be more votes because of how quick and easy this was. However, only 48% of our staff voted, where in the past, you would have 60% voting.
So, are you saying 52% don't care?
I don't want to say that, or they just did not vote. I don't know what that would be. Right. I don't know. And when they see, though, that our results were only three vote difference between the top two, it's serious, I can be serious when I say every vote counts. Every vote definitely counted. Our SAC votes, you know, each SAC committee also voted as one vote. Those were still done, of course, through paper, where it was, you know, open, everybody knew who voted for what at each SAC, and then those were added into the electronic votes at the end. So, here you can see, Mr. Dodd.
But along with that, though, you don't have any reason to believe that there was a communication problem. I mean, you feel strongly that everyone knew.
What we did.
They had a timeline in order to vote correctly.
Yes, what happened, I mean, in fact, even more so, they had 30 days to vote.
Yes.
We actually sent the link from the district office to every single staff member directly. So, it wasn't something where we asked the school admin to please communicate this to your staff. We actually communicated to every teacher, every support. We did at the beginning of the 30 days. We then did another reminder after the first week, and then we did another reminder email out the following, the week before the ending date of the votes. Then on top of that, we asked our calendar reps that every department and every school, we had, we met, we actually did like a Zoom with them and asked them to please notify your staff that, you know, and I even gave the numbers of, this is how many in your school that have voted so far. Here's the number at your school who have voted so far. So, that way, they knew, okay, we've got 60 employees or 100 employees, and you're telling me only 30 have voted. That kind of would possibly, you know, put a little fire in their boat and like tell them, okay, not even half of our staff is voting. So, they even had those numbers in the middle of the window. So, we really did try as hard as we could. It was just one of those where I'm not sure why the electronic version did not.
I'm wondering if any Russians were involved, is the question. Oh, hell.
So, here you have the overall voting results. You'll see Calendar 3 did win, per se, with the 421 votes. However, Calendar 2, only three votes difference, had 418. So, you could see that we didn't even hit that 50% mark when you look at the majority. As you see, 41.7% of the votes went to Calendar 3, or 41.3% of the votes went to Calendar 2. Calendar 1 did have 173 of the votes, of the 17%. The bottom, you see the breakdown per calendar with how many staff voted, and then the SAC voting. So, the orange is the SAC there. You can see that 13, the majority of SAC committees did vote for Calendar 3. However, what's interesting is when you look at the number of SAC votes in Calendar 2 has slightly, slightly more. And that's, the other piece that we noticed is, is that when you, in a few slides down, you'll see, we actually broke it down by school, and the majority of the votes, say, you know, at each school, what that is, but then what did their staff vote for? And I will tell you, in the past, whenever we've done paper ballots, what happens is, at the SAC committee, the SAC members are able to ask them, well, who's winning at the school? And the school does know, because they have the paper ballots and can do it. Here, they don't have that. So, the SAC committee was actually really going on their discussions or who's involved in that SAC committee and their opinions or their feedback to the group.
Interesting stuff.
So, it is, it was pretty interesting, especially when you see, I will tell you, the majority of schools, though, did, the SAC committees did vote for the one that that school did the majority as well. The majority, most of them. But there are some where it was drastically different. Okay, so here, you see, like I said, the overall. Here's just so you can know, participation-wise, elementary staff members, we did have, you could see, our 41% of the votes there are our elementary staff members, where 17 and 18% are high school and our middle school. We did have a group, our SAC, of course, you can see there's 2% of our votes. We did break it down also, where we had district personnel that were in support, where that would be, of course, your HR, your transportation, food services, risk management, maintenance, food services, all of those departments. And then you have district personnel that's instructional, where that was more of your ed services, TRC staff, your ESC staff, superintendent wing, those we considered being the district instructional staff. Other, that other piece were Crest, WTC, Renaissance, and our virtual teachers, that are full-time virtual, which is your elementary and middle for the most part. So, those virtual staff did fall under that other, that other piece there.
What about Pace?
Pace did not. Now, and the thing is, normally, we don't even include Renaissance, per se, but we did this time. Well, we do every time, but you've got to remember, those aren't our teachers, just like Pace aren't our teachers either. But they are our students. So, I think we've got to look at that and say, okay, do we want to include all of those staff members in voting, being that they are all of our students?
Yeah.
You know what I mean? We either go with all of them or we don't, you know?
But they do get a vote in the SAC from those schools, right? I mean, Pace would in the Renaissance. Don't we have SAC to Renaissance?
They do.
Yes, we do.
Right, Ms. Tom Bobb, like you would have the, Renaissance has a SAC that votes. Yes, yes, they do. Right, where Pace would not. Yes, that's correct.
But, yeah.
And Pace, Pace goes year-round.
So, their calendar is different.
I mean, their calendar, I mean, they'll change ours, but they go all summer, so.
So, they wouldn't follow our calendar. It'd be kind of like Cypress. Like, they wouldn't follow our calendar.
But they have great attendance.
That's true.
Pretty sharp today. Uh, no. It's that sharp at some point, too.
Here, it breaks it down for you by which one they voted for. So, as you can see, Calendar 3, you know, we know that 41% of the people that voted were from elementary world, but there you can see in the blue, 174 of them voted for Calendar 3, where 189 of the elementary staff voted for Calendar 2. And then you can see it broken down, and the stacking of colors matches the key, the stacking of the key. So, that gives you an idea there. Also.
And when I had a question, which you've already answered, I said, who are these other people? Because there's only a three vote difference between two and three. And I said, who's that purple other? 40 votes for three and only 16 for two? With the majority of our schools, there are 339 votes from the teachers at our schools for Calendar 2 and only 301 votes for Calendar 3. So, our teachers in our classrooms actually voted for Calendar 2.
Correct.
But there were 40 votes in the other for three and only 16.
And that had been virtual, Crest, Ren?
Yeah, so I just, that was unusual. So, my question on my little sheet right here was, who's this other?
Gotcha. All right, so that one broke it down. Now, here's where, when you really want to see that SAC piece. Here, it's broken down by school, so these are just your elementary, where the blue is Calendar 1, the red is Calendar 2, and the green is Calendar 3. So, here, what you'll see is, in the little yellow, it tells you what calendar the SAC committee voted for, for that school. So, as you can see, it's 3. The SAC committee voted for Calendar number 3, and that is, that was the highest also happened to be at that school. And again, the school did not know these numbers, of course. But then you do see some incidences where you've got schools where the SAC committee voted for one that did not match what the majority was, but it did count as an additional vote for that, for that calendar. Okay, so here's your results for elementary, and then you've got, of course, your secondary and your other schools combined here. Then we did the same thing with district staff results, where here you can see by department and what they, you know, what calendars they voted for. And then this one here, remember, this is that major difference piece that we made up this chart where, of course, there are more dates involved, like, you know, beginning day and things like that, but if they're the same on all three calendars, we don't include it in this chart. This is just a kind of a quick tool that, yeah, that staff likes to use to kind of just know what are the major differences when I'm voting. So, here you'll see that that Calendar 3, which was the winning by three, there were some differences, of course, compared to that Calendar 2, which was close behind it. Some of the major differences were that Christmas break. Calendar 2 had a larger Christmas break, and it started earlier in December. And that, you'll see, is one of the major reasons why Calendar 2 was voted on, especially by staff, is that when they were asked in the survey, why did you choose that? Christmas break, starting earlier, was by far the biggest reason people selected Calendar 2. And then Calendar 3, you see that one of the big reasons is, is that it doesn't go into June for Teacher's Last Day, where Teacher's Last Day does end in May in Calendar 3, where in Calendar 2, it does go into June. Another thing is regarding spring break. Calendar 2, you have a later spring break. It's later in April, and it's aligned with that four-day Easter break in all, like, on one. It's not aligned with the fair, but it is later in the school year. And where Calendar 3, people that voted for that, did like that the spring break was earlier in the school year and that it was separate from the four-day Easter break, and it was aligned with the fair. So, you know, you can see there were some differences there. Another reason why Calendar 3, I know people, based on what they wrote, they did like that Calendar 3 had a more even split of days in Semester 1 and Semester 2. You'll see that in Calendar 2, there's a 10-day difference when you look at the number of days in those two semesters. And when you think of instruction-wise, I mean, we do know that in Calendar, I mean, in Semester 2, there is more testing a lot, so you can have a few additional days in Semester 2, and we tend to do that. However, I don't know if we've had one where it's been that many days more. So, Calendar 3 did not have as many, so that was another reason why that they chose that. These three circle wraps here are just, again, showing you what I was just explaining to you, the reasons why they chose those calendars. Okay, and you can see that Calendar number 2, that green there, Christmas break beginning December 20th, 57% of those people that voted for Calendar 2, that was their main reason why they wanted it, why they liked that calendar versus the others.
It looks like Calendar 3 has a little bit more blended reasons.
And you have spread of reasons, yeah.
If that was, thank you, that was fantastic.
Absolutely. So, then the last, one of the last slides here is what Calendar 3 looks like, broken down. Then what the, what the public would, of course, receive. This is the visual that they receive for the calendar. This is the one that is chosen. The very, very last slide is Calendar 2 and Calendar 3 side by side, if you want to look at that. But I want to end with what basically your options are. We have a few options. The board can approve Calendar 3 with the current number of votes, even though there's only a three vote difference. The board can decide a different winning calendar based on number of votes or reasons. I will say that learning from this experience, we already plan on next year, when doing this, asking, when their voting staff to vote, please give us their, as the last question, what is your second calendar choice? So, that way, if we run into this again, we would have been able to have already collected that data and turned all those votes into what their second choice was from Calendar 1, and would have had different numbers for you here. And then your final option is, we could repeat the voting process with just Calendar 2 and Calendar 3 on the ballot only. For all staff, all employees would revote. We don't have to necessarily have it be a four-week window. We could make it a smaller window. And the SAC, all SAC committees would not need to revote. Only the two that voted for Calendar 1 would then, of course, need to revote if you do choose that as an option. So, these are just, you know, where we're at.
If we considered that, let's, how does that timeframe? Because sometimes we're up against the wall on dates to adopt the calendar.
How long do we have?
Do we have, do we have the time on our side to, if we did, say, go back and do 2 and 3?
Yes, I believe that actually Citrus County kind of decides this earlier when compared to other districts, what our next year's calendar will be. We normally have that approved earlier, and we normally do that because we run our families to be able to plan for the following year and things like that. But yes, we do have time.
If we have time, if we're so close and we only get, we didn't even get 50%. Let's just, let's send that back out for 2 and 3.
I think so.
And, but now, I want to make sure I understand this, because it would have to be a total reboot. It wouldn't just be, we're just not talking about, the only SAC committees we're going to say revote is the two that pick Calendar 1, but really, all the SAC committees voting in should they?
Well, they already picked, but I'm just saying, but they already chose either Calendar 2 or Calendar 3.
So, it's just one vote?
I'm just saying, those SAC committees already did vote on one of those two calendars that are now going to be on this new ballot. They chose one of those already. I don't know, so you're saying that there could be a possibility that they would change their mind, you know, that they went with three?
Yeah, I mean, if, I mean, the process is, I think we should pick Calendar 3. I know, I guess because we felt like maybe not enough employees voted. I guess, I don't know, but the SAC committees were pretty clear on which calendar they wanted, which is Calendar 3.
I mean, Calendar 3, I like, but I'm, you know, and I like that the SAC did do Calendar 3 as well in the process, but because we only had 48% of the staff.
48%.
And, and it's so close, and it actually, Calendar 3 with SAC doesn't, I mean, staff seem to lean towards Calendar 2, which they're, I mean, they have, Calendar 2 and 3 are similar in kind of overreaching ways. They, there are certain alignments, but the one big thing is that Calendar 2 has the, you know, the spring break not aligned to the fair, and Calendar 3 does have it aligned to the fair.
So, you're also in the school year calendar.
Calendar 3, like, one, one person.
The only thing I would agree was. The, the only thing that I would agree with Mr. Dodd about giving it to SACs as well. The challenge is, I don't think a lot of the SACs are looking to meet in the next month or so, and.
It would require those.
I'm, 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 I'm a little bit more interested if there was a difference with staff. I can make a decision today, but, but I also don't have a problem letting them revote that.
No, I, I wouldn't mind it, because, only because I noticed that the majority of the teachers from all the schools voted for two, probably because of the Christmas break. And then I was concerned that who the others voted, that really swung the, the twenty-four percent votes.
And can we get the vote out? Can we talk to them?
You're kidding, I vote.
I don't understand. Oh, in, in this county, everybody voted this time. Why didn't they vote for this?
I wasn't.
They were sick and tired of voting when this came around.
Maybe, and on Tuesday, we are meeting with principals in the afternoon, and based on what you all decide, our plan was to discuss with those principals what our plan is with this, and if that, if that is gonna be our direction, that they are going to be doing a revote, we will be asking them to please, you know, we, of course, are gonna push it out from the district, but for them to meet with their staff or talk to their staff about the importance of voting and how close this was. And even though the reason why we're doing a revote, that might itself also kind of ignite some, you know, staff members to realize that, okay, we were really that close, I didn't vote last time, you know, it could be a difference.
Yeah, and as far as the SACs are concerned, the Calendar One had a hundred and seventy-three votes, so that's a hundred and seventy-three people that have to change their mind.
Right, what needs to tell us what, now, that they would choose that, I mean, three?
I don't think any of the SACs except for the two that voted for one.
The two SACs? Mm-hmm, there were two SACs that voted for Calendar One, the other ones are in camp, pick two.
So if we, if we find ourselves in the same boat this next time that Calendar.
Majority rules.
If Calendar Two wins by three, we're gonna accept it. But, but, I mean, are we, I mean, that's just why, I'm, I'm just trying to say we have the process.
I said the majority wins before you said Calendar Two, just saying.
Say.
Well, if majority wins, we can vote for Calendar Three right now.
It, I mean, I mean, if, yeah, if you, if you say we agree with the process, then we should go with Calendar Three.
But I don't want, I don't want three hundred and thirty-nine teachers mad at us that voted for Calendar Two.
I just saw forty-eight percent vote to take it.
Yeah, that's true, I mean, I.
I guess that's how you define majority also. Do you understand, because the, the majority, forty-one point seven percent voted for Calendar Three, or forty-one point three percent, you know what I'm saying, and if majority a lot times fifty percent higher.
Have, have we worked, ask parents?
Plus one.
Have, have we ever sent it to parents? Wouldn't it become an interesting thing if we could send Calendar Two and Three to parents?
Well, you've got parents that sit on the calendar committee, you've got parents that sit on the SAC.
Correct, we do, yeah.
Well, I know, we're talking about very few, I mean, our count is very few, right? It would be kind of interesting, I mean, if we're thinking about improving the process down the road, I really, that's what I would want, I mean, like, which is the calendar that has most half, most half-days on it?
Calendar Three.
Calendar Three.
But it has most half-days because it also has most PD and workdays for teachers. So it has more workdays and opportunities for teachers.
Typically, I, I think, I mean, I.
Elementary doesn't only like the half-days.
Parents don't like half-days at school.
Elementary, mostly.
Yeah, maybe it's still elementary and middle, right? So, uh, you know.
Middle, wrong streets.
That's why, I'm just saying, hey, but initially, if, if we could, I mean, maybe there'd be a way to get parents more involved with, say, of, of the district too, is to get them to make the vote, but I, I don't know, um, I don't know how.
Well, I know.
Easy that could be this time, but we should look at that.
They eliminated a lot of half-days because they took the parent input that said they didn't like half-days. So Calendar Two doesn't have very many half-days.
Calendar One and Calendar Two did not have a lot of half-days, but they also didn't have the same amount of. The thing is, the teachers want more time to work in their classrooms. And so that's where Calendar Three did include those half-days, so that they did have more time for grading and working in their classrooms and, um, you know, you know, all the clock time that they are in their classrooms working, that's why that incorporated that in Calendar Three. But Calendar One and Two did not have the amount of half-days.
I'd say send it back out, try to get fifty percent plus one.
I, I think getting, I think in this case, it's so close and we have somewhat dividing, we, I think we just, if, if we have the time, let's just send it back out.
Would you like it to be in addition, four weeks, or would you like to cut the timeframe of then revote?
I, I'd like to.
Why don't we, can't we, I mean, we're not gonna be able to meet before we do it, so can't we do it in such a way so that it's presented back to us at the next board meeting?
Absolutely.
Regular or special?
No, just the, no, regular meeting.
Regular.
A month from, you know, a month from this meeting. That, I mean, it probably, it may be more like four weeks and not.
Right, so I probably do, I'd probably make it a three week, so that I would have a week to, to do this.
Yeah, my, my argument is, you know, we've got a process, I, I would be wanting to vote for Calendar Three today, that was the majority, that's the recommendation, so, and I would be right, I'd be wanting to do that today and not, not send it back out, but, uh, you know, to board, I mean, board, so.
I would just spin in the campaign. I'm gonna go there.
Well, I only, I only.
And she had to go back out and get fifty, uh, to get fifty-one percent.
Fifty percent plus one.
Plus one.
My concern is that, that the others were voted forty for Calendar Three, and only sixteen of our schools, uh, voted for Calendar Two. So there's twenty-four votes that really came from Renaissance, the press, and WTC.
Right, and I will tell you, WTC, one of their major reasons why they vote for Calendar Three was because of the more even amount of days in Semester One and Semester Two.
Yeah.
You know, and so with enrollment and things like that, that that was more important. So that, that, that was one, and so you could see that they, you know, their staff members would be part of that other.
Okay, now, here's just an opinion question, and opinions can never be wrong. If we're teaching people that didn't vote a lesson, I kind of agree with Mr. Dodd, because three hundred and thirty-nine teachers voted for Calendar Two and only three hundred and one voted for, for Calendar Three. So I, I'm inclined to think that the teachers in our brick-and-mortar schools want Calendar Two, but.
Well, the ones that voted.
The ones that voted. Forty-eight percent, and I hate to say that.
Say that last part again, that the, the ones in brick-and-mortar wanted which calendar?
They wanted Calendar Two. Three hundred and thirty-nine.
Yeah, that's what.
Voted for Calendar Two, only three hundred and one voted for Calendar Three.
That's what's frustrating, because Calendar Three's the one that wins.
But she's talking about if our, if, or the point is to teach them a lesson.
Yeah, well, and I'm just, I'm not, I know that's what you said, I'm not trying to teach anybody lessons. I mean, I'm saying.
I'm just re-voting.
You know, we have a process in place, um, you know, you know, we could be sending the message that everyone voted for Calendar Three, um, you know, now, we, we didn't agree with you, so we're sending it back.
Our teachers basically say things, don't they?
Oh, we definitely won't be sending that.
I mean, there's no doubt, I wish more people would vote, that, that is for sure.
And I have the same problem when we throw out surveys, and then we have to make decisions based on surveys that, that our employees don't eat.
We did have more participation surveys than we did with this, that was a doubt.
It's the responsibility of the board to set the calendar, correct, Ms. Crowell, it's the responsibility of the board to set the calendar.
Absolutely.
Correct.
We, we, you take our recommendation. We could come back next, next meeting and Calendar Two wins, and that doesn't mean I'm not gonna vote for Calendar Three. Because it's still, I mean, this is about information. I'm not saying I won't, but I'm just saying, the board always, at the end of the day, votes for the calendar. It, you know.
It's our decision.
I, yeah.
It is our decision.
I'm just, I just think it's good information to have, and that's why if we have time, given this circumstances, most years, you said, we get how many?
Sixty-eight percent with last year.
Sixty-eight percent of the vote.
Right.
I, I mean, I, to me, it doesn't.
And I think we can leave on the information, that's why it's about the parent, but then with the parents.
Yeah.
We could, we could poll our parents and say, hey, look at these two calendars and tell us what you like best. That would be an interesting component.
I'm sure Amy worked that down for next year, most of our parents are likely around calendar, and we don't want to address that again.
And one of the things also is what they're looking at in the calendar is definitely different than necessarily what a teacher is. I mean, they're not necessarily looking at professional development and workdays and things like that.
That's correct. I mean, that's another reason why Calendar Three, I think, is positive, it's got an extra dang half of PD, if I recall.
Oh, it has more PD, yes, it has more work and PD in it.
Um, so, I mean, it's, there's a lot of reasons why, listen, if, if we have to, I could make the decision today. But if we don't have to, I don't mind kicking the can and getting more information.
It actually has more PD and more half-time and more workdays.
Can you, can you get that vote in next?
Oh, absolutely. I would put it out as a three-week vote, if that's what you wish, and then we, I would, we would have it by your next.
What calendar did you choose?
I'm not saying that.
She does not have to tell.
She's good, she's good. That's why, that's really why we like this crowd.
What's our plan, Joe?
I think I'd like to see a revote and, and have it go over the fifty percent. I'm a little bit uncomfortable with the number of people voting.
I'm good with that, too. And I still need to vote for three. No worry.
All right, there you have it.
Can I, can I just get a clarification? So what about the?
What's not clear about this?
Really? No, I, and this crowd will do a revote, I'm gonna ask that she also encourage the schools, the principals, the leadership teams to have the staff vote. The other thing is, or the SACs, I'm unclear where we were doing, so are we, tell me.
Two SACs, the two SACs.
The last was two SACs, is that what you, okay?
I would just, yeah.
Just with those, I knew that, that you was talking about possibly having all of them or not, the two SACs.
Crystal River High Schools, I don't think have had their SAC meeting.
It was Crystal River High and Forest Ridge.
I don't think they had their SAC meeting yet this coming month, so there's.
Yeah, I, I'm on their SAC, so I, so that, I think.
It was on Forest Ridge.
Same here, I think it was.
Yeah, you met this month? Um, we, we met and voted on it, we had a lot of.
No, no, I meant, you had a meeting this month, or you have one coming?
So I mean, what they would need to do is, I mean, being that our SACs have been zoomed, like, it possibly, hopefully, we'll be able to have them just even if that's a reconvene just for that vote.
Okay.
But you did, you missed, one of the other points we said is that it was not gonna be an option for Calendar One, the vote between two and three.
All right.
But it's only those SACs that voted for one, so if the other SACs have voted, their vote is.
I, I think that's, it's.
Correct, that's what we're saying.
So I just wanna make sure we're clear on the communication.
Ms., Ms. Crowell, did you, am I sure you did, or when we send the email out to staff, here's the link, do we resend it out in the reminder? Or have we sent, I mean, I'm wondering if we just send out a weekly reminder, I know they need, the last thing they need is one more email.
Nope, that's no problem.
To open, but I just wonder if, it's like, oh, I missed the first one, but, um.
Oh, we always have the link and everything like that, and we actually even, we're trying to make the emails shorter and shorter each time, because we know, like, you know, the reading of an email is not necessarily. We yellow highlight, we color code.
Yeah, I like the highlight.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Crowell, on it.
Thank you, okay, then we will then reconvene next month.
All right, Mr. Stokes, you're up.
Thank you.
Yes.
I get so confused.
I believe I am now.
This is a hard act of all.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm already, I've lost this one already after that.
Can I postpone you until next month?
I just wanna build buildings. Paint stuff, build concrete, make roads. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
And before you start, I want to tell you that I, I know that I, I'm a teacher at the Cantor Middle, and she is absolutely amazed how well the Roundabout is doing.
Her, myself, and Ms. Farmer as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, uh, my concern.
I was shocked, no bus, you know, that went right over, and this kept going right down?
I figured that was one of those that would even be a hit, but I'd be looking for a job, I didn't know about that.
It, it, it really has moved, and it's, and it's a bad drive around.
Parent pickup was a great idea, that had been a home run. We had some hurdles, some obstacles with the project, no doubt, but at the end of the day, it's really rolling well, and we're very happy with the outcome. So that being said, we are here requesting approval of change order number three for the Roger Weaver Educational Complex evacuation route. I'll make that motion, uh, to approve change order number three for Roger Weaver evacuation.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Ms. Count. Any questions?
Yes. You know, I, I wanted to break before the board, so, I mean, that we could have a little discussion and talk about some of those positive things we've done out there. And this is, you know, let's face it, I mean, there was a little bit of risk there we took with the roundabout and with that design, but we knew, uh, Ms. Bryant and her husband knew that we, you know, we need to have a, the evacuation secondary route, we've done that. Because it may have, you know, I thought it went very smooth, I know there were some little hurdles we had in the way, but we did it with impact fee funds. Yes, we had it approved, there, we are, we are partners with the county on making it safe for, uh, you know, all of our citizens, a lot of citizens that use that complex do for different events, and, and we hope to continue that. Now, you know, we've talked about, I know there was some discussion about a light, a traffic light down on Saunders Way, and, you know, and things like that. And, and listen, I, I, I mean, we work well with the board, county commissioners, I don't know if that'll ever come to us, but, you know, we've gotta, you know, realize that they did help in, in some ways with, you know, we laid the case for impact fee money, and, and we got it. You know, and we're, we got other projects coming down for impact fee money. So, man, I'm just very pleased, I think the final product is very well done. I know this change order is kind of right before the punch, I'm sorry, you're gonna kind of cruise out. This, this basically reconciles the job, yes, so we're ready to close the project. Uh, the field work is ninety-nine point nine percent complete, I believe we're missing one arrow sign, but, uh, we're complete for all practical purposes. This reconciles the financial aspects, where we can now go back and put the job.
And Mr. Dodd, something that didn't get paid through impact fee monies, I think, maybe they didn't, I, I didn't realize it, but has made a huge difference, that's the strike. The, the reworking of the parking lot itself there.
That was integral, because it actually affected traffic flow, and we were able, like, lighting enhancements, things like.
Yeah, that looks like. It, it will, and it just, it, many times I find myself going, in the old days, going down one road and going, oh, jeez, that's the wrong road, and having to come back, you know, on the lane, not anymore. It's, it's, it is so clear and so, I mean, just truly great job, all, everyone.
Pave right was, were they, they.
Yes, sir.
So I heard that they did a good job out there, I mean. Pave right did a great job, that's a prime example of a local contractor or candidate, we had a lot of engineering challenges, swift, permitting. I mean, we had the turtle in the beginning, we had, you know, we had it all, but they stopped. And I, and civils, I, the one thing I don't care for, civils, the one I could pass on, but it actually went well, and they, they were great partners with us in this project. And for your, you and your staff and the work that was done to make this thing a reality, is, um. We appreciate it, yes, great people on it, it was a complete team effort, I will say that.
Something I wondered, and it's, it may not be something you can answer, but we had a traffic person there because of the challenges we previously had.
Yes, sir.
Is that gonna be necessary going forward? I'm not, not saying that it may not until we're a little farther along, but honestly, it looked like the person at this point was more waving them through the signs now.
You're talking, oh, I'm sorry.
And, and like in front of Renaissance.
We've actually been able to minimize the time required for that individual. Right now, uh, we do have an issue that they have to be there in the afternoons, because we do not stop the kids, we can't get the buses out, if the buses don't run, they don't get back for the second running time. So that, that we have not been able to mitigate, but basically the rest of it, now it's down to a small window of time.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And, and two, I know that the plan going forward for safety and security is to, to practice that evacuation plan. Make sure our other first responders, and I know Dave Vincent, I see Chief Vincent right there, um, on that evacuation route out at the Kansas School Complex, that, that, you know, our other first responders are aware of, you know, what could take place. I mean, I, I don't know, Dave, if you've got a drill planned out there at some point or what, but, um, I, I know that'll be a, a good thing for us to make sure we're on top of that, so thank you.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, well, she carries four zero. Thank you, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, have a great, have a great, thank you, Happy New Year.
Safe New Year.
Okay, budget amendment number three, who's doing that? Mrs. Wilson, all right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I ask for you to approve budget amendment three, amended as of November thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Looks like we're largely just recount, you were just kind of recapping, I mean, reclassifying, moving some things around.
Um, most of it was just money we received in that isn't in our original budget. Um, we received in the performance-based incentive funds for WTC, um, that's, you know, they, they take us automotive, nursing, there are different programs, they receive money, so that it's not in our original budget, because we don't know what is going to be awarded, um, that was one of them. WTC also, there's lots of different avenues of tuition reimbursement, uh, based on student enrollment, that was booked. Um, some little amounts, vending commission, we got a little FEMA reimbursement for Hurricane Hermine from sixteen seventeen school year.
All right.
So, uh, that's, you know, nothing like waiting for that money.
Checks in the mail.
Yeah, checks in the mail. Um, another one, another thing is, we got, um, we've earned another. Um, another one, another thing is we got, um, we've earned another almost thirty-eight thousand dollars in selling our old white fleet, so that does go to help purchase, um, the payments on the new white fleet. So basically, in the general fund, those are the, we did increase the, uh, the fund by about forty-two thousand, um, mostly that's from the sale of the white fleet. We also, in, uh, special revenue, we got the full Title One, the final Title One allotment, uh, debt service, we had to increase the budget, that was for those, the second iPad lease, and, um, just putting that budget in there, and for, um, they have changed the way we have to book, the AES PICO money comes to us, and we used to just send it to them from capital, now we have to bring it into our capital, transfer it to our general, and then transfer it to their capital, so they've turned it once that process into three steps, so we had to book...
So that one, we can go from capital to general to back to the capital?
Back to their capital.
Back to their capital.
Their capital, yes.
Let me ask you a question about the field question, was Enterprise involved in that?
Those were for the ones that we sold on the auction site, or they took down, some of them, they took down to, um, the car auction, I know that Enterprises helped with some, I think we got, we sold some a few months ago. Marilyn would have to give you specifics on where the exact monies for that, we, they just send the check over to us and tell us we sold white fleet, and this is where it came from, so... Yes, yes. Yes, ma'am.
How many motions do you approve, uh, budget number three?
Dodd, a second?
Second.
Candy? I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Ms. Kennedy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion carries four zero.
Thank you. I'm just making sure I had enough time, so there we go, a little budget amendment, so, or budget, uh, update. Um, so just to let you know, our audit is in, in full swing right now, um, they are, I probably got about thirty-two emails, I think I counted today, from them requesting information, so, because they're working from their Tampa offices, or they're working from their homes, we did have to Zoom, do fraud interviews and stuff with them, and they were actually in their homes, so, um, we have a nice share file, we're just uploading as fast as we can, everything's been going very smooth with that, um, so, you know, their deadline is March thirty-first, I know they want to get it done sooner than that, but, um, you know, we're just giving them everything they need as quickly as we can. Uh, we also had to file the DAC bond report, um, that's due every January eleventh, that is due for, for us to keep our bonds current, it is, um, has to be uploaded on the report. Um, our general fund, just to let you know, um, we are up about four million dollars over where we were last year, and this is mostly due to our ending fund balance being, it was a little over three million better than the year before, so now this is at this time last year, which is November, um, we did start to receive some of our tax revenue in November and December, they break up, we get a little tiny bit at the beginning of November, then the end of November, we get a nice chunk because people have started to pay their, their taxes, and then December, we got quite a bit of money in, and you'll, you know, we'll see that reflected more in our, um, general fund and our capital funds even more next month. So, um, our revenues actually are down though from last year, and that's mostly because the state were waiting for the TSA allocation, we submitted our report that we had to do for them, we've now paid our teachers their increase, but we're still waiting for the state to give us the money that they've awarded us for that, so, um, just be cognizant that we are up, but we, fifty-one percent of the revenues come in, but we've only sent out thirty-two percent of the expenditures for the general fund, so that's because the tax revenues come in. Just to give you a little update on the, uh, CARES money, we have spent about forty-seven percent of what we have been awarded, so that's good, I know some districts are having difficulty spending that money, um, we're, we're trying to get through it as quickly as we can, and, um, let me see, what else do I have here? The debt service fund, um, you know, just so you know, we have seven more sinking fund payments to make before we have that large, all those payments we make will go into, you know, a pot, and then we'll make that big thirty-five million dollar payment, and, um, like I said, the capital projects fund balance is down a little, that's because we have the additional Apple leases this year that we didn't have last year, and, um, just as note on self-insurance, just so you are aware, the revenues were up about one point seven six percent, but our claims are up thirty-one percent over last year at this time, so thank goodness we have it, we had a healthy balance, so now we are able to manage those without, you know, having to transfer any money from general funds, so, that's about all I have about our financial situation right now, any questions for me? You have about two seconds?
Ms. Wilson, um, and, uh, Mullen, you mentioned the CARES money, and I know you've given us details, are you going to come back to us, um, or can you come back to us and maybe give us, just so that we have some, you know, some details of, of the pieces of that, I know, um, I did a presentation and you gave me some figures that were really helpful, but I, I, I think it would be helpful for people to realize, we, we've been really good stewards with our resources, and it is, it is accomplishing a lot, and at the same time, I don't think people understand that, um, it's not like it pays for everything, and our general fund is still impacted, you know, by things, I mean, a lot of people don't realize, like, for example, the ten-day monies that, uh, for the family leave, we had to come out of the general fund in order to fund that, that's, that was not something we've been funded by the federal government, like private business was able to offset, and that means we have to go after finding money in other areas, and I would tell you, looking at some of those figures, it was, I, I felt better, as, as I often do when I see those, I think it would be good for all of us as the board.
We could, we could do a summary on our budget update at the February, uh, board meeting, do a summary of what we've had.
Yeah, I think just those things that you, you know, kind of helped me with, that I reported out to...
Maybe by then, we'll have an update on this, the second round of money that's supposed to come out, uh, we haven't got anything concrete on that yet, so...
But we have, we have to be careful too, a little bit, because sometimes we do say we don't want to have to dip into our fund balance, and yet our beginning fund balance is up again.
The beginning fund balance was, is up from where we ended last year.
Correct, I mean, but that's what, that's what we're talking about.
But the fund balance at this moment, what I'm saying is up right now.
That's a, that's a snapshot in time, because that's, she said we've only spent thirty-one percent, and then six months from now, it's not going to be...
Right, we paid out salaries in December.
It's not the final projected. Well, I understand that, that's still, what, what is, what is our percentage on our, on our...
I don't have that in front of me right at this moment, so...
So it's not going to be up though, I mean, right, I mean, I'm flitting at this report.
Well, because it's a, if we look at exactly where we are at that moment, of course it's going to look up, because we just brought in fifty percent of our revenue, but we have...
I think he wants a projection to where we're going to be again.
That's, yeah, that's what I, that's not what that shows. But if we can look at year end, too, we can always look at year end, right?
Yes, sir, I can do that, too, yes.
We can give you a projection of that, if that's what you're...
But interim is always looking higher than what budgeted and actual...
Because our revenues are, are way above the...
Right.
And the, the retro check this time was almost, I think it was almost two million more than normal due to the salary increase, so there, you know, that's two million right there of our, um, of that four million increase right there, so just, we have to be cognizant because the money comes in quicker than it goes out, it comes in in Jan-, uh, December, third, November and December, and January is when we get the largest chunk of our funds from taxes, but we have to, the largest spending is May and June, so that's, I just like to be cognizant.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson, five o'clock, it's time for Mr., uh,...
Thank you.
Oh, whoever is making this.
Six.
Mr. Dixon, look here.
Good job.
Good job.
Thank you.
We're now in a public hearing?
Oh, yes, yeah, thank you, thank you.
That's okay, you're just, you're always the one reminding me, so I...
Okay, so we're going to recess the regular meeting, and we're going to open the public hearing.
We have the student progression plan first.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here this afternoon to request final approval for the twenty twenty twenty-one student progression plan.
Um, I move approval of the, uh, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one student progression plan, second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mr. Dodd, do we have any questions, concerns?
I think we just need to get a public input first.
Oh, yeah, you may have any public input on this? Hey, don't lie to me, this is on my, I fell off a horse, now, get, get back up, get back up. Any public comments, questions? Third time's a charm, okay.
Great, thank you.
What do you think about...
We need to go, we need to go.
But you don't, you can sit down.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries four zero, so I'm working into that document.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now you get to start it all over again.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Dixon.
Yes, now we have, uh, a total of six, uh, policy updates, one new policy, and most of these are housecleaned, so, um, getting a lot of these off the books that...
Can we lump any of them together?
I think, uh, you need to vote on...
Okay, let's go.
A public input separately.
Do be.
Um, the first item is to approve policy two point six two, family and school partnership for student achievement.
I'll make a motion to approve that, uh, policy two point two sixteen.
Second. There's your number, Mr. Dodd, a second by Ms. Count, do we have any public input? Any public inputs? Third time. Right. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries four zero.
The next item is policy three point four oh five, school environmental safety incident reporting, this was a new policy requested by the board to lift out the Cessar requirements in policy.
I'll make a motion for that one, too, that we adopt, uh, approve policy three point four zero five, and I'll wait a second.
Second.
And thank you for, you know, I think that was the wisest thing to do, and, you know, I'm, I'm, it's still not like it, it's thank you.
Really good. Do we have any public inputs? Any public that wants to comment or question this? Third time, any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries four zero.
Third policy item is policy four point seven two, um, the homeless students, this is an update to add citations.
Move approval of, uh, adoption revision to policy four point seven two homeless students.
Second. There's a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Ms. Count, to approve or adopt revision of policy four point seven two homeless students.
I still have any public action, Mr. Dixon, but I still have a problem with enrollment for any student, that's just necessary, homeless, district will immediately enroll a homeless student, need a district, without any documentation, and I just, you know, sometimes we...
Ms. Count, I think that's, if there's any public input, don't we? All in favor? Is there any public input? Any public inputs? Any public inputs?
I just, I want an explanation, because how can we...
I think it's statute, somebody may be, but I think it's, yeah, I think it's statutory language, but...
Yeah, but it's, it's difficult for us to have somebody come in without any documentation, they were unadoptable.
And I think that the only exemption on that, because we, we've really tightened that up in elsewhere, I know in policy informs, we, we now, we did, we don't have, they don't have that. We used to have a period of time where we, we would let them, and then I thought we changed that except for homeless students.
We did, we, we did. Yeah, this, with, with, um, McKinnon, with the homeless, it's primarily their entry in, I mean, I know what you're talking about, it's like their shop records, their birth certificate, all of that, that's where it gets more critical than getting their, like, you know, training trips and their grade level.
Yeah.
Then finding a placement, you know, if there's no records at all by age and then placing that way is a little bit easier than, it's not as big a hurdle as it is for those other documents.
It just works like immediately and even if they don't, just kind of...
And, and it's, we have several, um, groups that it's written that way in other places, foster care, military families, homeless, so I think it's, it's, it's there to, you know, to help and to protect them.
Monitor them.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Absolutely. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
That's why I said, if you have age, can you adjust it?
The next policy update is four point seven four, educational stability for students in foster care, this is, uh, similar to the homeless student policy regarding the citation.
Do we have any public inputs? Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment? Any public inputs? Board? Do you have a motion?
I make a motion that we adopt, uh, policy four point seven four, educational stability for students in foster care.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Count, a second by Ms. Kennedy. Any questions, comments from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 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 motion carries four zero.
And the final policy update is five point seven oh regarding student records, uh, this is a revision to the policy...
Wait a minute, what about five point seven one one?
That's after that.
All right.
Sorry, I do have another one after that, I'm sorry.
Okay.
The, this, this one is five point seven oh to include provisions of the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act and policy five point seven oh regarding student records.
Do we have any public inputs? Anyone in the public would like to comment? Any concerns from the public? Board, do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt or approve revision policy five seven oh student records.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Ms. Count. Do we have any questions from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Carries four zero.
Yes, and the final policy update is five point seven one one, parental access to information, this is a change from No Child Left by the Board to Every Student Succeeds Act, and updating citations.
Uh, do we have any public inputs? Anyone liking to make a comment? Any public inputs? Do you have a motion, board?
To approve of five point seven one, parental access to information?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Count, a second by Mr. Dodd, do we have any questions or comments from the board? All was in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, very good.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
And before Mr. Dixon leaves the, the desk, um, I just want to tell you something, I said before we started our meeting, I still remember one of the forms that I went to on policies when I was a graduate, remember back in, in fifteen, and it, I was surprised that we do so much, because there were boards sitting across the state of Florida that had never even seen their policy book or revised it, so I wanted to say thank you, we're glad to have you for five more years, but you make our district look very good, even if it was just a name change to every child.
Okay, thank you very much.
I, I couldn't believe it when I heard other boards say they don't even do anything about the policy book.
Well, when I first started doing this, and I learned, uh, the first thing I did was go to another district, where there was somebody I knew who did this, and what I found out is, it is true that every district does it a little bit differently, so, but we do keep on top of it, and I appreciate that.
Thank you for what you do, sir.
All right, Mr. Bradshaw?
Nothing at this time.
Uh, can I get a motion to approve the minutes of December?
Smooth approval. Move approval.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Ms. Counts. All in favor? Aye. She carries at zero. Citizens comments? Any citizens wanting to comment? All righty, none. I'll go next, sir. Any other business that needs to come before the board? Mr. Mullen, do you have anything?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Kennedy?
Couple of things. One, I've got to congratulate all of our honorees, as well as the 2021 School Related Employee of the Year, Rick Gardfry from Crystal River Primary, and the 2022, and I know I actually read that correctly, it's just dates are a little off the way they were, for our Citrus County Teacher of the Year, Judy Banfield from Hernando Elementary. And we've got to pause and give a big round of applause to the CFCC, our educational foundation, their board of directors, Lindsay Blair, Amy Barberary, and of course, our Shonda Burdette, who just did an unbelievable job doing a live broadcast, which included.
Her back was out, did you know that?
Yes, I did. So you couldn't tell it on the screen. And the amazing hosts of Amy Crowell and the other guy, that was Dr. Heber. You guys were just phenomenal, and you made for a special evening. You know, there was an article recently in The Chronicle on COVID update, returning to schools for this semester. And after reading it, I just felt like there was a couple of things that came to mind that I really just felt I needed to bring to you all and to the leadership here. I think, first of all, we are doing amazing work. And I had the opportunity, as I talk to school districts around the state in my role as FSBA, we are very blessed in our community. We're also a Goldilocks-sized community. And so because we are just the right size, we can make improvements, we can shift when we need to, we can adapt and make those for our kids. One of the things that I really feel very burdened is, is that we need to relook at our position when it comes to permitting mentors and volunteers, particularly essential ones, as we return to schools. Mentors are exceptionally important, especially at the high school level. I've shared this before with the superintendent, I will continue to express this. We are getting ready to start Semester Two on January 19th, and we can't go about it alone. These mentors, specifically ones from like the educational foundation, Patrick Simons, Career Coalition, and Career Coalition, the men building men, the women building women. I believe we've shown we can do this safely. We have not had flare-ups in our schools. And these people are essential at being able to help our guidance counselors, our teachers. And I know firsthand that while we're doing some Zooming, while we are trying to adapt, we know that these kids are needing to come back to brick and mortar and face-to-face with people. They need to come face-to-face with these mentors as well. And so I'm just appealing to us to reconsider that position as we are moving forward. In line with that, one of the things that was said was that we, we're going to be considering looking at what we do about graduation. If we can have football games, basketball games, and other events, then we need to be able to try and have a traditional in-person graduation for our students and their families. This is not May of 2020. We know we can do things safely. We're doing them all the time. We have hundreds of people going into our sporting events today, and we're doing it very successfully. I believe we need to, we have four and a half to five months to start working on this. Now's the time to do it. I've spoken, yes, ma'am, go ahead.
It's 5:15. It's time for citizen comments one more time. Carry on.
Thank you. I've spoken with other districts. They seem to be going towards and marching towards preparing for in-person graduations. I think we need to be looking for that, and I definitely support that. With that, again, I just want to say to our law enforcement that how much we value and appreciate you. I talked about it at the beginning of the meeting, but never forget that we don't forget you. You answered?
All right, Mr. Dodd?
Yes, I do miss having Ms. Powers here with us on the board. I hope she is feeling better, and I'm glad when she gets back, back with us. But I too want to, I'll reiterate what Mr. Kennedy said about the education foundation and the Teacher of the Year, School Related Employee of the Year. Kudos to everyone involved with that process to recognize. We have some stellar employees, a lot of stellar employees, and we're grateful for our teachers and support staff, our administrators. I mean, the fact that we're in school, I said, I was asked to say the invocation. You know, we really need to remember that our community appreciates the work that's being done. It's so important we have our schools open. So, but the education foundation and all those involved did a wonderful job with that. And Mr. Kennedy, thanks for that recognition for our law enforcement, first responders, you know, law enforcement, and I think what you were talking about, which is so vital. And the fact that you highlighted two of the programs that we offer here with the law enforcement corrections, and Gaddy right here with Future Technical College is a great thing, our guardians, I'm glad you pointed that out, too, our guardians, the fact that we have individuals that are willing to step up and protect our schools. So that was very appropriate, thank you. And then on FSBA, on legislative days, I guess that is next, correct?
Yeah, it is. It's going to be more of a training and some live and tape webinar. So you'll be able to tune into it, but it's going to be more informational than it is. One thing that's important, and you may have saw it, Mr. Dodd, because, first of all, if you want to do testimony up there, you're going to have to go to basically the convention center to get testimony in the Senate, or you're going to have to pre-sign up and have a COVID test done in order to go into the house. So the procedures are quite extensive. That said, you can perhaps more easily get your concerns on the record through emails this year. So it's definitely, we've always been good with that. We are blessed to have the representation, but you're right, it's different.
And I will also, I also support the use of certain volunteers or mentors. I would like us to be able to look at that. You know, I've weighed this out. I mean, it is surprising our numbers, the way they have been going up in Allen County throughout the state of Florida. But I do agree that there are some ways that we can mitigate that, and we may have to be able to open it up to all of the volunteers that we've used in the past. But I think we should look at a way that we can incorporate these volunteers and mentors. And in fact, too, I agree on the graduations. You know, I haven't spoken to superintendent yet about that, but I feel pretty confident that we'll probably agree that we want to move in that direction for graduations. But it is important that we start now. I, you know, I believe they will be looking at that. You know, I appreciate the information from administration in regards to issues going on with our teachers. We had a comment about the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act, and some of the things that were there. And I appreciate the opportunity to talk with Dr. Heber and Mr. Mullins, superintendent, about some of those things, because I can tell you, there's a lot of discussion, at least I was involved with, and I know there's a lot of thought that's going into that. I did have some thoughts about the sick leave bank and how that could look differently. So, you know, I think that I would like to see some option for us for the sick leave bank. I'm not so sure on the employee-to-leave, but I would be willing to have a discussion on that. And so I just wanted to.
And I've diddled, 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 diddled. One of my favorite mentors, that you did mention, is the Texas Children's Hospital.
Here, here.
And I know they're still working, you can't stop that man after. If you try to, you might get hurt. But we do need to figure out how we can get some of these really essential mentors into the classroom. And so I think it's important for the kids to see. I was invited over to Rockford through classes, and history. And the kids absolutely were amazing as fifth graders. And so I was considered an essential person. Graduation.
You were.
Well, I tried to stay, I tried to stay away from schools. I haven't gone in and visited just to say I'm there. But I would like to forward your graduation. And I don't want to slam football and basketball, and girls soccer do not, but against River High School. But I would like to see something planned. The only thing on the backside of that is, as soon as you start saying graduation, then you're going to hear all kinds of requests for proms and prom parties and things like that. And so just bear in mind, once we open up one door, they're going to open up some more doors. So we have to be prepared to answer those questions. And again, I can't say enough about our SROs and our guardians in our school and welcome to your, your first month at the school. And so we feel safe in our schools because of these people that are, they're dedicated to the children. And to their safety. And I just can't say enough about the vaccine in school. I'm looking at a little bit of the backside, because I am going to do the propaganda speeches at the Kinko Middle School. And I, we were going to Zoom it, and I just got an email a couple of weeks ago that they have found a room large enough and limited capacity that they're going to have the kids speak in person to the judges. I don't know if they're going to limit the parents. But our schools individually are trying to do things, too, and I think we need to support them. And then 4H is doing something at Cornerstone. I hope I'm not stuck in a very tiny little cubby hole with forty kids, but I said, yes, I'd go and do that. So we've got our community trying to get back to some sense of normalcy for our children, and I'd like to support it anywhere we can, as long as they're safe. We're watching our numbers. And the schools that I'm involved with are not seeing a spread as a result of our school. We're seeing cases coming into our school. But with Tito's contract facing, we're not seeing it spread in our schools. So we're doing our job. And we all have our masks, but we don't have masks at the property. And the kids are washing their hands, they're carrying their hands, standing side to side. Our teachers are keeping their classrooms between classes, and so it's fortunate. And I cannot stop without saying enough about our custodial staff.
Here, here.
That our schools are clean, and I think that's a big part of the fact that we are not seeing what some of the other schools are seeing. And so really, really. So I'm going to convert to.
All right. Well, I would say I totally agree with Mr. Kennedy and everything he said.
Just say diddled, diddled, diddled.
Particularly about graduation and the mentors. And I had to participate in that little thing. Normally, the school board member gets up and says, "Good night, drive carefully, be safe." I couldn't say any of that. So what I did was I said, "Your school board members love you." And I have proof of that. Every one of us have children who are either attending or already graduated from Central County Schools. We love you, and thank you for what you do." That was it.
And great prayer, by the way, too, yeah.
All right. Homeless dads that did their propaganda speech contests, and they had some virtually, because they were being taught virtually, and they had some live and in-person.
Oh, that's great.
On a day, yeah. That's all I have. Anybody have anything else?
The only thing, too, did we ever get any? I thought somewhere I read or saw about the elected leaders summits was still.
I was glad you mentioned that.
So, did you guys have?
No, no. And I saw Mr. McBride, Captain McBride, at an event, and he said it was still a go for January.
Okay, see, I somehow thought that, too, but we.
I don't know.
Usually we get an invitation by mail.
Fran, I will look and I will send something out.
Thanks. And, you know, and if not, maybe we should reach out to, you know, to them and Doug or something.
I just assumed it was canceled.
Well, I did, too, and then I saw some, I don't know, it might have been in The Chronicle or something, but I thought I saw something, I don't know, for Buster, it's kind of like.
It's everything that's in The Chronicle.
Maybe if we could just look into that.
Yeah, because we always.
And then on that legislative day, do you want to do it upstairs again like we did?
I don't, you know what? I'm still waiting to see what it's going to look like. I mean, if we can, that's great, but I don't know that it's quite the same thing. The other thing, too, is there's going to be like one day that, one day the board of directors is meeting, and there's something else that they're trying.
Mrs. Biden.
Yeah, she, definitely. Thank you, everyone, thank you.
All right, meeting adjourned.